Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Millbrae Planning Commission meeting for April 4th, 2022. We are holding this meeting via video conference only, as is noted in the agenda and as we've been doing for two years now. So we'll continue with that. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and start with the roll call, please.
Commissioner Wong?
Present.
Commissioner Quake? Oops, you're on mute. That's okay.
Present.
Thank you. Vice Chair Davis?
Here.
Chair Joe?
Present.
Thank you. And I'll keep an eye out for Commissioner Del Negro.
Thank you. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And if you can call up the flag, that would be great. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll go, we'll start with item number one, which is Agenda Review. Do we, which has to do with reviewing our agenda? Do we have any items that we need to change or any notes from commissioners or staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to item number two, which is Approval of Minutes. This is for the irregular meeting minutes of March 17th, I mean, March 7th, 2022. Do we have a motion and/or comment?
Comment?
Yes, Commissioner Davis.
Go away. Um, in number seven, under the Commissioner announcements, where it says the rest of the Planning Commission agreed, I didn't agree. Can we just take that out or modify it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, about the packets? Yep, I don't think that was, I think maybe a couple of people did agree, but it wasn't everybody. So I think that's fine. So besides that, are there any other comments and is their motion as amended?
With that change, I'll move to accept them.
Thank you.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Wong. Can we have the vote, please?
I'm sure. Let me just pull in, sorry, Commissioner Del Negro. Hey, Commissioner Wong?
We're calling for the vote, yeah.
Yes, sorry. Commissioner Quake?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Chair Joe?
Yes.
Commissioner Del Negro?
Yes.
Thank you. So the minutes are approved 5-0 with an edit on page three.
Thank you. And I did want to just comment that I think it was these minutes, I was pretty happy with the way they came out and very clear on what, you know, any objections were. Well, keep it to action. So I did want to make a note of that. Moving on to item number three is public communication. So this has to do with any, for, it is reserved for any persons wishing to comment, comment on any item of not appearing on our agenda this evening, but it is, but items that are under the purview of the Planning Commission. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak? And if you do, please raise your hand virtually. I think that would be the easiest way. So this is not regarding the item on the agenda. I'm not seeing any. So seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to item number four, so which is our public hearing. And four A is for the 111 Rollins Road. This is a public hearing on a design review permit and a conditional use permit located at 111 Rollins Road to allow building and landscape renovation for a biotechnology scientific laboratory and office use located within the Millbrae Station area specific plan, Employment Center/Light Industrial zoning district. May we have the staff report, please?
I'm sharing now the presentation. Is everyone able?
Yes, we see it.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Joe, Planning Commissioners, applicants and members of the public. My name is Sam Fielding. I'm the Senior Planner in the Planning Division, and I will be presenting the planning application for design review permit and conditional use permit located the 111 Rollins Road to allow building and landscape renovation for a biotechnology scientific laboratory and office use located within the Millbrae Station area specific plan, Employment Center/Light Industrial zoning district. After the presentation, I will be available to answer questions, and I'm also joined by Roscoe Mata, the Planning Manager, and the project applicants Dennis Cambia and Albert Chang, and the property owners Paul and Andy Paschke. After staff's presentation this evening, the project applicant will give a brief presentation with the submitted plans. The proposed tenant improvement project is located on a parcel at 111 Rollins Road on the southeast corner of the intersection of Rollins and Adrian Road within the Employment Center/Light Industrial Zone in the Millbrae Station area specific plan. And you can see located where the red dot is, is the location of where the project is. These are the existing site photos shown here, which include two buildings at the project site. So Project A is the larger building at the corner, and then Building B is the smaller building to the rear corner of the lot. So. This is the project overview. Currently, the building is vacant. It previously was used as a blood bank facility. Again, as was mentioned before, it's in the Millbrae Station area specific plan. The size of the lot is 32,630 square feet at the corner of Rollins and Adrian Roads. It has an existing total 9,710 gross square footage combined between the two buildings. And the proposals for interior and exterior renovation of both buildings, including new landscape and streetscape improvements in conformance with the Millbrae Station area specific plan development standards. There will also be, under a separate building permit supplemental, new signage, subject to Millbrae Station area specific plan and code requirements for review and approval. Although not required, the project for the future tenant will submit a transportation demand management plan for review and approval by city staff. The proposed project will include streetscape improvements according to the Millbrae Station area specific development standards. These will include replacing the existing five-foot sidewalks on Rollins Road and Adrian Road with 10-foot wide sidewalks, installing accessible curb ramps, new driveway curb and resurfacing and restriping the parking lot, and new pedestrian lighting. The applicant will also be required to install new street lighting along Adrian and Rollins Road frontage. The project site has 26 parking spaces, existing surface parking spaces, which shall remain. 25 spaces are required. The project will also install 22 short-term bicycle parking spaces and six long-term indoor bicycle spaces. Two bicycle spaces are required. All trash pickup will be located at the rear southeast corner of the, of the project. So at this location, it will be with access from the Adrian Road driveway. And a wooden exterior trash enclosure shall be conditioned. The existing building footprints for Buildings A and B will remain the same. The interior renovation will include a new reception area, office, laboratory, break room, utility rooms, and restrooms, a shower room and restrooms, basically for the, for the bicycle locker, for the bicycle area. The scope of the interior work will include minor demolition of interior partitions, new doors, partitions and suspended ceiling, and some new finishes and casework will be included while keeping the majority of the surrounding interior construction. Both buildings will be equipped with a new fire sprinkler system. These are the existing elevations for the main building A. The exterior building renovation work will include replacement of all storefront doors and windows, new exterior gray wall color, kitty gray is the color, and a new dark green fascia color, Devonshire green, a black wall sconces for exterior lighting and roof equipment screening, which will be gavulon gray. The plans will be revised at building supplemental to include a clear glass windows facing street frontages only for the building with black anodized, for the building, and it will include black anodized window frames. These are the existing elevations for Building B. And again, the exterior colors and materials for the smaller Building B will match the colors and materials for Building A. This slide shows the existing and proposed roof plan with this location of the rooftop's equipment screening. The proposed project includes extensive landscaping on the property surrounding the main building facing Rollins Road and Adrian Road, including ground cover plants, shrubs and trees, both landscape trees and street trees. One existing tree located to the rear parking lot will be removed. As conditioned, an offset row of London plain street trees will be located on the sidewalk frontage along Adrian Road and Rollins Road in addition to the proposed row of trees in the landscaped area. This will be a special condition of approval to be reviewed by staff at building permits supplemental plans. These are, some of the names of the plants and shrubs and trees that are listed on the table. This is found in Attachment Six Plan Sheet A 7.0 of the landscape plan. Would also like to note that the, the tree species will be revised. The recommended or preferred tree for the, for the landscaping is London plain, not the trident maple. And then, as was mentioned before, along the sidewalk of both Adrian and Rollins Road, staff is recommending adding street trees offset about 20 feet to the proposed trees on the landscaping. So that this would be in addition to the landscape trees. This slide shows a rendering of the proposed project, including widened sidewalk, landscape plantings and trees, pedestrian and street lighting, and exterior renovation improvements to the building. Again, I'll just note that the London plain trees will also be planted along the sidewalk adjacent to Rollins and Adrian Road, offset by 20 feet. So there'll be additional trees planted along the sidewalk. These are some of the conditions of approval of the project. Includes the proposed landscape tree species on the sidewalk next to Adrian and Rollins Road to be London plain, adding sidewalk trees, the street lighting, which will be designed and specified according to the Millbrae Station area specific standards and to match the street lighting type used for the Alexandria Life Sciences Project, which is located across this, across the street and to the north of the project site. Again, the building and window frames will be clear glass on the street frontages, and the window frames will be anodized black color frame instead of the aluminum that was shown on the, on the plans. And in the future, the signed permit, the future tenant will be required to submit a signed permit application to the Building Department for design review and approval subject to Millbrae Station area specific plan and code sign standards and requirements. And lastly, the trash enclosure shall be constructed of wood, so it'll have wood, natural wood screening. The applicant sent out six consultation forms to adjacent property owners. No responses were received by either the applicant or staff. The city also conducted public noticing requirements as required by Municipal Code Section 10.05.2900, which includes posting public notices at four locations at the site, a 300-foot radius notice mailing, the newspaper announcement, and posting at three locations near City Hall and posting on the city website. Pursuant to Section 10.05.2500(c) of the Millbrae Municipal Code, the design review application materials shall be evaluated by the Planning Commission. The following findings are required to be met for the Planning Commission to approve the requested design review permit. Staff determined based on the root review of the project plans and the Millbrae Station area specific development standards that the proposed project meets the design review permit findings required for approval as referenced in the project packet, Attachment One, Resolution Adopting Design Review Permit Findings. And again, pursuant to Section 10.05.2520d.1 and 2 of the Millbrae Municipal Code, the conditional use permit application shall also be evaluated by the Planning Commission, and the findings are required to be, be met for the Planning Commission to approve the requested conditional use permit. Again, staff reviewed the conditional use permit and determined based on the project plans and the Millbrae Station area specific plan development standards and policies that the proposed project meets the conditional use permit findings required for approval as referenced in the project packet, Attachment One, Resolution Adopting Conditional Use Permit Findings. Based on staff analysis and review of the proposed project, staff determined that the project is consistent with the Millbrae Station area specific plan, the general plan goals and policy, and San Francisco Airport land use compatibility plan as evaluated in the project staff report and included in the project resolution. Staff completed an environmental review of the proposed project and determined that the project is categorically exempt pursuant to Section 15301, Class 1 of CEQA. Specifically, Class 1 AC and F allows for project with interior or exterior alterations involving interior partitions, plumbing and electrical conveyances, street improvements, including pedestrian crossing, sidewalks and parking facilities, and street trees, and the addition of safety or health protection devices in conjunction with existing structures, facilities and mechanical equipment. Staff is recommending, staff's recommendation for action tonight at this public hearing is to adopt the resolution approving the design review permit and conditional use permit to allow building and landscape renovation for a biotechnology scientific laboratory and office use located within the Millbrae Station area specific plan, Employment Center/Light Industrial zoning district located at 111 Rollins Road, subject to the attached conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation. Staff and the project applicant and property owners are available to answer questions about the proposed project.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fielding.
Thank you.
Before we hear from the applicant, do, do any of the commissioners have questions of the staff? Okay, I'm not seeing, I, hold on, let me check. Okay, so if we can go ahead and hear from the applicant, please, and Mr. Fielding, if you can stop sharing your screen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, I will bring them in now.
Thank you. Is Mr. Chang one of the, is he the main applicant? Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chang and Dennis.
Sure, so we're waiting.
Yes, they have all been promoted. They're just waiting to come in.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. I'm just joining right now. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine. We'll wait. I think there are a couple others coming in.
Fantastic.
Okay, great. So welcome and we're welcome, and we've already heard from the staff. So if you'd like to go ahead and if you have a presentation or just any further, any further information, please go ahead and do so.
I think Mr. Fielding covered the details of the project fairly significantly and quite in depth. Members of the boards and if available, present neighbors of 111 Rollins Road. Thank you for your time this evening. What I would like to do is to go into the plans, but before we do, I'll talk a little about our client. Andy Paschke and Paul Paschke own Landmark Builders. They've built labs for the last 35 years. CAC Architects, we've built labs for the last 25 years, and we've worked together on many different projects. This is Andy and Paul's first foray into building their own lab, and so they're really excited about kind of this first endeavor. With that said, I'm here to answer questions or potentially respond or present the, the intent of the interior plans, if you'd like, but I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Thank you. And do, I think you said Mr. Paschke?
Paul probably won't join.
Okay, Paul is here. Would you like to make any comments or add to that before we get to Planning Commissioner questions?
Now, Paul, you might be muted.
Doesn't seem like if you're speaking, you're muted. So if you don't have anything, that's also fine. Okay, do we have any, oh, go ahead. Hi, welcome.
I'll take the time to say thank you for everyone for allowing us to be here this evening. And thank you, Sam, for presenting for us and Albert as well, and we're, Andy, speaking on behalf of Andy, he's sitting in an auditorium this evening for one of his daughters has an event. But we're obviously very excited to hopefully be welcome into the community of Millbrae. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome. So do we have any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Wong?
Oh, welcome, everybody. Looking forward to looking something out to have a successful project here. Main concern for Millbrae that I would have is just looking at life, health, safety and then property and then operational impacts to make sure it doesn't impact adjoining neighbors, right? Okay, so let's start with, I guess, just safety, life, health. Do you have, I don't see much development in terms of hazardous material storage. I think that for the staff, we should make a condition to make sure that all applicable permits are obtained. San Mateo County Health regulates hazardous material storage and permitting and submit the necessary business plans. But I'm worried about your containment area for hazardous material storage, making sure it doesn't run off into neighboring properties or create some nuisance. So do you have any other further developments about maintaining or secondary containment for your materials, hazardous materials area?
Commissioner Wong, thank you for that question. So we will stay within the realms of a type B lab. So when you work on the taller buildings for ARE, you know, the developers, they typically, as they go into high-rise buildings, they'll do type or L-suite occupancy labs. Our volumes are so low for type B labs such that they, they won't exceed the chemical inventories or biological inventories set forth by the California Building Code. So when they have discharge, they will only discharge neutralized water. They'll be cognizant of that. Bio-waste will be contained into 55-gallon drums. Chemical waste will either be neutralized before discharge or more so will be contained again in off-halt in 55-gallon drums. So most of that will be consolidated in, if necessary, fume hoods, which have containment and exhaust requirements or in the shipping and receiving area. So relative to second, yeah, it said second, a second layer of containment, it's not that common to do second layer of containment for the occupancy, given the low level of hazards.
Okay, I would just like to recommend any controls and making sure the slope of the, you know, grading of the driveway and, you know, your hazardous materials is in the corner of the lot adjoining to adjacent neighbors, so making sure it doesn't run off and create a nuisance into other adjoining properties.
We'll definitely make note of that. Thank you.
Can you speak a little bit about the exhaust for the fume hoods too? I noticed that a lot of these fume hoods in the design are right next to the Rollins Road walkway. We have assurances that there's no blowers blowing out into the sidewalk.
Yeah, we will be smelling Mrs. Fields' cookies or anything in this application. For the fume hoods, the fume hoods will branch together and consolidate into one common fume hood exhaust system per code, per California mechanical code. From there, the exhaust will discharge through a high-velocity exhaust fan through the roof. From the high-velocity exhaust fan through the roof, it'll discharge the, you know, the air from the labs higher, much, much higher into the atmosphere than your typical exhaust fans will. So the safety of, of the public, people walking along the sidewalks will not be impacted.
Okay, thank you. That's the main concerns I had.
Thank you. Commissioner Wong. Commissioner Del Negro?
So I'm not sure exactly what I heard about the biohazardous waste. Is the biohazardous waste being stored outside the building in the trash location in the corner, or is it being stored in the facility?
Commissioner, the biohazard waste will be stored in the building.
Got it, okay.
So they'll work on it in the labs, in the biochem labs. When they're done with it, they'll consolidate the waste into 55-gallon drums, and a company typically Stericycle or somebody equivalent or Safe Harbor will come by and pick it up via truck and off-haul.
So you're not staging externally for pickups on the waste?
Not externally.
I've done that before. I just have to make sure you have a lock box and a chain so nobody has access to it.
Of course.
I didn't hear about the water discharge testing location. Do you actually have a location established for access for discharged water for testing?
A sampling port, we have not shown at this kind of diagrammatic level, but we definitely will show a sampling port for city access.
Okay, it's obviously really important that it has to be an access point that comes.
Definitely, something outside of the building.
Yeah.
Really accessible.
Yes. And I read, obviously, some of the things that are going to be going on in the building, very normal. Didn't see anything, no radio isotope. Do you think there's anything going back?
Right, so right now it's a spec building, but we're not envisioning a radio isotope lab. It's, it's so small that that level of specificity will not be required with, for example, a tissue culture lab.
Right. So, and also liquid nitrogen, external storage of chemicals. You have no liquid nitrogen tanks on site as far as externally.
If they do have liquid nitrogen, it's, the facility's too small to support a bulk nitrogen system, so they'll likely put it on the inside and distribute from gas, from liquid to gaseous on the inside.
By doing doer system, yeah.
Exactly, exactly.
All right. And last question I would have is more about the building, you know, the rooftop screens. You know, prevailing winds, we take into account, we have, we've done any type of analysis to make sure they can handle prevailing winds in that area?
The mechanical engineer, if requested, can do a prevailing wind study that determine both the plume from the exhaust fans as well as impacting adjacent areas. So we'll make a note of it if it's requested.
Concerned making sure, obviously, it's going to be stable up there in that high winds zone area.
Exactly.
That was it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other commissioners? Okay, I, I had, this is not so much a planning, but a question of, of the applicants in terms of, it does seem like a small, Mr. Chang mentioned a few times, it does seem small. So just curious as to the market for a biotech company to start. I'm assuming it'll be a small startup or something. So I'm just, I would like to hear a little bit more about that if we can take not too much time.
Definitely. So the design is a spec design that is intended to support actually three smaller biotech tenants. So in the PDF that Mr. Fielding presented earlier, the small appendage building would support one tenant potentially, and then the longitudinal building could support one lab tenant on each end. And in the market right now with the larger developers like ARE, BMR, HPP, they're, they're building these quite large projects to support pharma companies that are, you know, potentially have a product already or will be close to having a product or close to FDA approval at Phase, Phase Two and up. For these folks, there's a tremendous amount of demand for these smaller spec labs. We've, this is actually what we specialize in. We did a few spec labs in various parts of the area. Oftentimes, as we submit for building permit, by the time we finish receiving approval, they'll find a tenant. And so it's extremely they'll find a tenant, and so it's extremely aggressive in this market. Only because the larger, yeah, the larger folks cater to the larger projects and there's a dearth of developers who who work on smaller projects. But these types of projects, they're just absolutely critical for the smaller startup pharma companies and without, you know, the general developer community providing it, it's really uh, creating a hole in the current atmosphere.
Okay, well, that's good, I I was just curious as to that, and you know, we always want to make sure there's, I'm sure you've done your homework in term in terms of making sure there's a market for it, uh, we don't want to have empty buildings, so I think that's like what it is right now, so I don't have any further questions, do we have any, um, other commissioners, any questions? Okay, I'll, for now, oh, Commissioner Quig.
I also had that same concern, uh, not concern, but question that everything seems so large nowadays, and I was wondering if um, your company was actually gonna be occupying any of the spaces or if it was just, as I heard tonight, I was just that um, spec and that you will be renting it out uh, to smaller tenants, but that was my thought when I was reading the project, so uh, thank you for the clarification. Um, and I, you know, in today's environment with everything being big, 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 I was somewhat concerned, although very happy that you are just using the building that you have without going up four stories and having more uh, space and and filling up everything, so um, those were my questions as I had reviewed the project today, so I I'm happy to see that there'll be nice landscaping, um, I think your choice of landscaping is quite nice.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, um, so let's go ahead and go to public comment, are there any members of the public wishing to speak, and if you do, please raise your hand on the uh, zoom app. I think that's the best way to do it, so if you'll, um, if you can go ahead and do that.
I'm not sure. I had one last question, which was, uh, what do you anticipate the duration of the project is gonna be to get it occupied?
Uh, little less than a year, from from building permit to TCO.
Any, thank you, any members of the public wishing to speak? I'm not seeing any.
Yeah, there are new hands.
Okay, can I have a motion to close public comment at this time? Motion from Commissioner Quig and
I'll say that.
Second from Commissioner Del Negro, can we have a vote to close public comment?
Commissioner Wong?
You're muted, Commissioner, he's nodding his head.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Don Nagra?
Yes.
Commissioner Quig?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Chair Joe?
Yes.
Thank you, public comment is closed.
Thank you very much, and can we go ahead to either motions, motions and or discussion on this project? Commissioner, uh, Vice Chair Davis?
I I will just say that um, this project is bringing great improvements to both the buildings and the surrounding area. Um, it's nice to have more biotech in the MSASP light industrial zone and it's gonna be great to have more jobs in town, especially near the station, it's a beautiful project, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'm sorry, did you make a motion?
And um, you know, people can still discuss if they like, but I would move to um, approve the resolution attached to uh, approve the designer review permit and conditional use permit to allow the building and landscape renovation of biotechnology scientific laboratory and office use in the Millbury Station area specific plan Employment Center Light Industrial Zoning District at one eleven Rollins Road, subject to the attached conditions.
Thank you, do we have a second?
I can second, um, but you know, I thought of one last question.
That's fine.
So um, the signage will come to us at a later date, is that correct?
Not, I don't think, believe, I I believe it's under staff, it would be staff approval.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, the the signage will come uh, submitted later through the building department for review approved by by staff, and we will make sure that it's consistent with the Millbury Station area specific plan and uh, city municipal code sign requirements.
That's fine, I will second the motion.
Thank you, um, before I call for the vote, do we have any further discussion, I want to make sure everybody, oh, Commissioner Nigro?
Now that I'd also reiterate, um, what Chair, uh, Commissioner Davis said, which is, you know, obviously you're bringing a lot of positivity to this project, very happy to see it coming in with very minimal, you know, negative impact on the community, it's fantastic, um, congratulate you on bringing something to the city of Millbury, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wong.
To mention, uh, there was that, and I think it's worth raising that there was that one comment from the airport. I guess the city received a note, uh, from my review of the package that they were recommending not not to allow this type of facility. Was that correct, can uh, staff comment on that?
Good stuff, can staff, Mr. Vata or Mr. Billy, can you, I guess, Miss Commissioner Wong?
So, no, that's that, that's not correct, it's it's um, so it's it's basically about the, we did the analysis uh, for the a level two, uh, basically a level two biotechnology facility. And so the SFO and their land use compatibility policies, they are are silent on level two, they they uh, there there's, it it's it's essentially permitted, the other higher levels, um, they recommend not um, having those those levels at the site, but for level two, which this project is, it's it is, it is, um, it is not prohibited.
Okay, so I just wanted to raise that and clarify that, and then also the other life sites, Alexandria proposed facility across the street also, that was same uh, bio safety level two, right, same, it's consistent.
Yes.
That's that's correct.
Okay, uh, I would like to raise one concern again, just making sure that uh, you know, it's permitted to be safe and addressing the neighboring concerns. You know, it might be worth considering adding a condition that in terms of hazardous material storage and handling and disposal, that we add another condition that it just, the facility has to meet all applicable hazardous materials, storage, disposal, handling
Yes.
permits and including the San Mateo County, specifically San Mateo County Health Hazardous Materials Business Plan, so if we call that out.
Uh, yes, but Commissioner, Commissioner Wong, uh, this is Sam Fielding, uh, the senior planner, we we do have a condition in the um, the the conditions, it's condition number sixty seven. So at the time of building permit, uh, submittal and review, uh, the requirements, uh, well, that will be reviewed that are included, include laboratory, uh, laboratory operations, ventilation, manner and location of hazardous material storage exiting uh, and with reference to the fire sprinkler system installation and fire and life safety requirement shall be reviewed at that time. So I think that covers your concern, uh, that that's uh, condition number sixty seven that we have in the conditions of approval.
Great, and I see no, have no further concerns and no further comments on on that, looks like it would be safe and, uh, you know, codes permitting safety requirements for residents of nearby properties and occupants of nearby facilities.
Yes.
Thank you, and and I would just add that this is for the building itself, I think when the company comes in, they'll also have to go through their own standards and making, and there is OSHA standards, there are a whole bunch of standards already in place that they will have to abide by. So I think that should cover, hopefully that would be, I I see Mr. Chang raising, uh, nodding his head, so I'm
That is correct, as part of their business license.
Right.
Were present their HMIS hazardous materials inventory statements, HMVP, uh, the full gamut of activities.
Right, so it it is very heavily regulated, so hopefully that will, I think that will take care of that concern. Um, okay, so with having, we do have a motion and a second already, so can we go ahead with a call for the vote, please?
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Commissioner Del Negro?
Yes.
Commissioner Quig?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Chair Joe?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much, so we, um, so this is passed, there is a ten day approval period, appeal period, so please note that and the city will be in touch with you regarding that. And besides that, congratulations, I would concur with the other commissioners in saying, you know, it's exciting to see it, I think we're we're starting our little own biotech hub over there and uh, without having a lot of buildup and cause, you know, we're all concerned about traffic and all of that, so it's good to see the applicants, uh, you know, being mindful of that as well, so congratulations and we wish you the best and look forward to seeing some good little startups coming out of maybe some discoveries coming out of Millbury, that would be awesome, so.
Really appreciate your time this evening, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, so moving on to item number five, we have, I don't see any new business, item number six is our staff updates. Can we have those, please?
Thank you, Chair Joe, um, we, just an update on the uh, new applications, we're receiving a new application for a um, a new home on uh, Encina, so that's thirteen forty three Encina, um, and regards to the new uh, future planning commission meetings, we're we're still fifty fifty on the next planning commission meeting, I know that, um, we're waiting on one piece of um, information from an applicant, um, and um, you know, so that may or may not be received in time for the eighteenth, um, but if not, then uh, we will most certainly have a meeting on May second.
I'm sorry, so you're saying it's possible we might not have a meeting on April eight?
Um, we 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 have tentatively scheduled one, but we're still, we're still waiting on an applicant.
Okay.
So you get us information.
Great, thank you.
So we may cancel it.
And that's it for the update?
Um, that's it, thanks.
Today, um, okay, and then item number seven, planning commissioner announcements. Well, okay, um, I I I said I'm not gonna be here for the next meeting, so if it doesn't happen, that'll be even better, and then I do have the shredding party going on at shredding event at Mills High School on April thirtieth, so just a reminder of that, and e-waste recycling, uh, any other comments? Okay, with that, I think, I'm not sure if this is the shortest meeting we've had, but seven forty two, so we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting for this evening, thank you, everyone, and for your time here, and have a great week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Thank you, everyone.